We're right on there. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Law, the prayer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Lord, you have called us to one table. Guide us not to pursue our own course. We have been elected to work together for the good of all the people, not just a few. Remind us of the abundance that we have to share and not let our greed or envy, let any go without. We have been promised the waters of peace and justice. Do not let our violence and discord with each other grow. Return us to our duties for one and all. Send us from this table an assembly to lead in fairness and impartiality. We ask this in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Roll call.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Here.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Leone?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Chairman Brenneman?
Here.
Councilwoman Fatiga, if you would please present the citation.
Yes.
And for those who will be receiving the citation, just please come forward up to the podium. Sheriff Loomis and Chief Dacus.
Thank you for letting me be the one to do this. This citation and this organization means a lot to me, both with my work with the City of Erie School District and being able to see the students interact with the Police Athletic League. And then I noticed, as my babies from Nurse Family Partnership Program were growing up, I saw them involved also, now that they're eight, 10, 11, and 12 years old. So this is really an honor for me to be able to do this. Whereas, a local committee comprised of them, of then-Chief of Erie Police Randy Bowers, Sheriff John Loomis, and Attorney Rondi Nicola formed in 2016 with the mission to build the cop-kid relationships through athletics, made a decision to bring back the Police Athletic League. Active here in the 50s and 60s and still active in larger cities, and whereas Sheriff John Loomis and City of Erie Police Chief Donald Dacus have taken hold of the effort to bring urban children and members of law enforcement together in a healthy, positive setting so that they may view and treat each other differently in other encounters. And whereas, the program has many possible facets, from athletics to tutoring to mentoring to helping kids escape from dangerous circumstances. All have the potential to bring hope to schools, boys' and girls' clubs, and community centers. And whereas, Erie PAL is a unique collaboration that shows the power of partnership and high ideals focused in a positive and dynamic manner that has the ability to change the path of the community, one child at a time. And now, therefore, we, the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join with grateful citizenry in applauding the efforts of Chief Donald Dacus, Sheriff John Loomis, and their fellow officers and deputies in resurrecting the local chapter of PAL, which joins some 400 other nationwide in a mission to build trust and to create meaningful experiences that will remain etched in the memory of all participants for lifetime. And I want to make mention that this is the one and only chapter that has a sheriff and a chief of police together. Congratulations.
Would any of you like to say anything?
I would just like to thank Ms. Fatiga, Council, for allowing us to receive these at your meeting. This first year of the PAL went beyond our expectations, but it couldn't be done without the gentlemen sitting back there that stand up, guys. You deserve it. They're the ones that take time away from their own families and their own children to help children in need. It can't be done without them.
Thanks. Thank you, Council. Really appreciate it. This just reinforces our motivation to keep doing what we're doing, and these guys are the key. It's nice for us to be able to stand up here and receive this, but they are the ones building those relationships, and we've already seen, you know, over 60 kids that they've actually, you know, reached out to and touched. And it's really heartfelt to watch these guys bring the human side of police work to these kids, so it's positive reinforcement for them. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And Chief Dacus and Sheriff Loomis, if you could please, for the record, just let us know the names of the officers here that are part of the program?
Certainly. From the Erie Police Department, we've got Mike Coshon, Chris O'Connell, Curtis Waite, Thomas Lennox, and Jason Weissmiller.
And flanked on the left is Lieutenant Marty Davis from the Sheriff's Office and School Resource Officer David Knight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we get to a hearing of the public, do we have a class attending the -- where are you guys from?
Penn State Barren.
Penn State Barren. All right. Well, thank you for being here. If you have any questions about the process or anything, you can come to us after the meeting, and we'd be happy to answer any questions, but we appreciate you being here. Hearing of the public, since nobody called ahead to have their name on the agenda, there's nobody that has five minutes, so anybody else who wishes to speak from the public, go ahead and come up to the podium, one at a time. You'll have three minutes. Please give your name and municipality. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Name and municipality, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
My name is Mike Runcel. Live in East Springfield. I had two friends of mine. They got involved in a small amount of drugs. And one of my friends died this February. He got shot by his wife. Some people sold him illegal drugs. He caused them to drink. Bad things happened. And another, one of my friends, James Zegras, is 21-years-old, and he owes someone $100 for some marijuana. He died, too. Got shot in the head, both of them. One guy went to my wedding. The people, I think, who did some of this stuff went to high school. They've come to my rental properties to rent from me. I see them at the grocery store when I go to the grocery store. I just don't want to associate with these people in any way. They might have minor criminal records from when they were younger, juvenile, early twenties, but they're still doing the same stuff. They're known by law enforcement. I just, I never want to see these people again. And I think it's great to give someone a second chance. I rent to two convicted felons, and two other people have misdemeanors. I rented them, but they work. These other guys might work, but they still sell drugs. Everyone who knows them from high school knows what they do. And my friend Kevin, he had a drug problem a little bit when he was young. Over 12, 13 years, he didn't drink nothing. Matter of fact, he left the city, moved out to East Springfield, and he met up with some of the high school friends, and his wife ended up shooting him. And even though he died from a firearm, I blame it on drugs and alcohol. And I think it's horrible. We've got it all through the city. I have two rental properties on 16th Street, and there's a drug house on Poplar. I watch people go in and out of there all day long. Been doing this for like five, six years. As I mow the grass, I watch people sell drugs. And I would never rent to anyone that comes in or out of that house, and I should never be forced to. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. I know you spoke, speaking on the HRC ordinance that we're still in deliberation on. If you could, and I don't know if you already have, but if you can leave your contact information with our office, either with Danae here after the meeting, if you're able to wait that long.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? I just name and municipality, even though I think most of us know who you are, so.
Janet Anderson, Fairview Township. Good evening, esteemed members of County Council and members of the public at large. I would like to speak on behalf of Up for the Job Initiative as a member of the Coalition. I personally received calls from out-of-state manufacturers asking for the list of GE-impacted workers so that they may recruit them to their facilities inside and outside of Pennsylvania. Like our manufacturers, others suffer from a retiring workforce and lack a pipeline to fill those vacant positions. After a number of us on the Coalition received these calls, the UE 506 worked with the county to develop a collaborative effort to brainstorm and strategize ways to keep dislocated workers here in Erie. The Up for the Job Initiative was the result of that collaboration. Northwest Pennsylvania Job Connect, formerly the Northwest Pennsylvania Workforce Development Board, or WIB, as many of you know us, is a public workforce system engaged with helping dislocated workers and others with barriers to employment, access benefits, and ultimately find jobs. The role that Northwest Pennsylvania Job Connect has played in the Coalition is to provide aggregate information about the current status and progress of those GE workers, the changing identified needs and expectation of these workers, and the efforts of the workforce staff on behalf of these dislocated workers. The data that I shared with you shows that Erie County has an ample supply of skilled workers to meet the demands of manufacturers here in Erie. Unfortunately, they also meet the demands of manufacturers outside of Erie, Pennsylvania as well. Time is of the essence. Impacted workers have taken advantage of the relocation benefits afforded to them by the Trade Act and have moved to other locations in Pennsylvania and beyond. Erie County Council has a real opportunity to partner with economic development, UE 506, Northwest Pennsylvania Job Connect, the Chamber, and others to launch a proactive approach to business attraction with a resource few communities have, a ready and skilled workforce, a workforce that wants to stay right here in Erie County. You must act now if we are going to keep them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Just for the record, name and municipality, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Council. My name is Scott Slosson, Mill Creek Township. I'd like to speak on the Up for the Jobs campaign as well. As many know, we've been in the decision bargaining with GE yet again here over the last 60 days, so I've kind of been out of the loop a little bit. But one of the things I would like to talk about is Janet brought up that initiative that was brought on by us, and the reason we brought that initiative on is because we've seen jobs, good family-sustaining employment migrate away from this area. We've seen the closure of Hammermill. We've seen Starrus move on. We've seen Zerns move on. We're seeing GE move on. And what we truly are looking for is to replace those jobs with good, family-sustaining jobs for our community, jobs that actually assist what the sheriff and the, you know, the police department are doing, a future for our people. We're watching our population dwindle. We're watching our workers leave. We're watching our skill level leave. And that's something that we're not willing to give up on. We're not willing to give up on Erie. Many of us actually left this area and came back for a reason, because we love the Erie area. And there's no reason that we can't attract viable manufacturing to this area. We have a very low cost of living. We have a beautiful area. We have a nice body of fresh water out there. We have a port. We have rail access. We have, you know, the airport out there. I know some questions came up about the RFP and how that came about and the selection process of how we got to the person or the LLC that we chose. And I can tell you that we were in on that process, and the Chamber was in on that process, and the county was in on that process. The entire group was there. Three people, three organizations came in and gave us a bid for their work. And at the end of the day, separately, we all chose who we thought would be best suited to represent what it is we're trying to do. And then there was another meeting after that where they talked about modifying that RFP to further it. I guess the initial bid was $36,000. And I'm here to urge you to please consider that $36,000 that we discussed last week. But the other part of that is, this is not a one-and-done, and I think everybody needs to understand that. This is not a six-month process where we just say, "We're reaching out to Siemens," and "We're reaching out to Bombardier," and all these big companies to attract them to Erie. This is going to be a long-term sustained initiative, and I can tell you that we're in it for the long haul, and we're asking you to do the same. So we appreciate your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? And again, just for the record, your name and municipality, and you'll have three minutes.
Ron Oliver, Erie County. It's honored to be here this evening. It's my first time being in County Council. I've been down to city council many times, yelling at people, so I hope I keep it down a little bit. I'm a steelworker, Local 3199. We had over 1,800 members in the early 2000s, 2002, '05. Now we're down to about 700 members. We lost so many jobs in this county, man. We really need this initiative to go for, up for jobs, or any type of initiative to bring jobs back to Erie. We have so many people that's laid off, that's qualified, work. We need jobs here. You guys are leaders. We pay your salaries. So we expect in return, jobs. Is I'm saying this wrong, or what? I'm a labor liaison for United Way. I go in, when people lose their jobs, and tell them about the different resources. You should see some of the faces on some of these individuals, men and women. It's a different field. You tell a person about resources, so they won't fall between the cracks, but they don't want to hear. They don't want jobs. So this up-for-job thing with Kathy Doll Camper, I hope you guys support it. It should be a no-brainer with respect, that that's what we need to happen here. I've seen it all. I've seen too many people lose their jobs. Kyle Faust, you know that, brother. I'm talking to you. Andre, Jay, you guys know who I am. It's tough out there, man. I see it every day out there. So I hope you guys vote the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Saying none, moving on. Have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Horton and --
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Fatiga. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the minutes, Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Reports of county officials. On behalf of the county executive, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize that there may have been some confusing, confusion, excuse me, surrounding the up-for-the-jobs proposal, and I would like to address that on this evening. As you know, up-for-the-job initiative arose from community organizations, including the Erie Regional Chamber and the Growth Partnership, UE Local 506 Leadership, United Way of Erie County, the Workforce Development Board, Labor and Industries Rapid Response, the Governor's Action Team, and ECRA. Members on the committee heard several presentations, in fact, three presentations, who responded to the RFP for up-for-the-jobs. And then each member scored separately the proposals. The eight committee members' scores were combined, and 10.53 Newton Limited Liability Company received the highest score. In a following meeting, between committee members and that consultant, the conversation turned to the potential for this project. The enthusiasm in the room grew, and the committee was eager to launch this much-needed initiative. I believe it was that great enthusiasm in the room that led to the confusion about the budget for the project. I regret that confusion surrounding this issue, and it was never my intention to provide misleading information or confusing information, shall we say, to council. The good part about it is that it has been corrected. The current request before you today for $36,000 for six months stays within the integrity of the procurement code. Additional funding opportunities for the initiative will be sought from other community partners. And I'd like to add to this that the value of the process of working with County Council worked really well. That confusion was identified and allowed to be rectified. I thank council for seeing the potential for up-for-the-jobs initiative, which is so important at this very time to grow our economy and to give the workers, these men and young women, the opportunity to stay in Erie and to raise families in Erie and to provide for their families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Finance Committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 28, and we agreed to place the following on tonight's agenda. It will be the second reading of ordinance number 90, which speaks to the issue that Mr. Lee and several other public speakers have addressed. Also, we are going to add possible adoption of resolution number 37, which exonerates all outstanding taxes, penalties, and interest on seven properties owned by the redevelopment authorities, and will also have possible seller parcels from the repository for unsold properties. Before I conclude my report, I'd also like to say, although they left, I thank this body for the certificates awarded to the Police Athletic League. I serve on the board of directors there, and I can tell you that it's already had an impact in several of the least, the communities that don't always have the resources that other communities have. And the work that our sheriff's department does, nothing to take away from the City of Erie Police, because they're all the men and women, great jobs, but I am so proud of the work that Sheriff Loomis and the men and women of the Erie County Sheriff's Department perform in their duties at the PAL. So thank you again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we move on to old business, you know, I think a lot of people are trying to search for some kind of solace or meaning in the events that have hit our country, first with the hurricanes that have devastated large swaths of our country in the South and Puerto Rico. You know, there's, for a natural disaster like that, there's always something to blame. You know, you could blame the weather. You could blame the forecasters. You could blame the municipal leaders, whether they paved too much, that they not create enough overflow or ways for the water to leave the area, that they not enforce code standards for houses to withstand those type of weather events. And in those crises, we tend to know how to respond. You know, you go, people go down, and they help dig people out. They help clean up the homes. They help find people temporary shelter. They help find people the type of food and resources that they need to at least have some normalcy until things get back to order, until they get that insurance check, until they get called back to work, whatever it might be. But in times of extreme violence against people, you know, I don't think there is any response that is, that rises to the level of extremes that we saw. You know, personally, I, hearing the gunshots and those videos and watching people scatter, I can't imagine anything, you know. Having that in a war zone is one thing, but having that happen on our own soil for people that are just living the everyday lives, trying to have fun, trying to appreciate a simple concert, something as simple as that, to have it wrecked by such evil is horrific. And, you know, the only response we can give, other than, you know, maybe there is a policy response, but in the immediacy, it's ensuring that, you know, people have access to their loved ones, for those who have family and friends that are down in the area, donating blood, giving people your, you know, praying, whether you, whatever you might believe in, has an effect. And if you can't, you know, you can't always go down to a disaster zone and do something. You can't always go to an area devastated by hurricane and help out. You can't always go down and render first aid in an event where people get shot, but, you know, there are things you can do here. You can always help out in your neighborhood. You can always help out in your community. You could always donate your resources, your time, whatever it might be. So we don't have to wait for a disaster to do something. And I think the greatest weapon against evil, the greatest weapon against this type of horror, is to always think about your neighbors, whether you know them or not, and always look for ways to help each other out, because I think that's the true test of our country. But with that, I'd like to give a moment of silence to those who've lost their lives from both the hurricanes and the horrific shooting the other day. Mr. Smith, old business, second reading of ordinance number 90, entitled only.
The second reading of ordinance number 90, 2017, 34th, 2017 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $102,000, and creation of up-for-the-job initiative line items.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion? Councilman Horton?
Mr. Chair. I move to amend the fact sheet, the exhibit two and the exhibit three, the certificate, to reflect the $36,000 that was in the original RFP, bringing us in compliance with the RFP.
Do I have a second on the motion? Moved by Councilman Horton and seconded by Dr. Faust. Any discussion on the amendment? Dr. Faust?
I share all of council's concern, anybody in the community's concern, that, you know, maybe the process that this was rolled out was not as perfect as we would have liked. But the amendment to this ordinance today puts us back in alignment with the original RFP. I think certainly this is initiative that its goals are laudable enough that we need to go forward with. This is a tough time, and the workers that have been laid off, it's an especially tough time for them. And this gives us a chance to start something, and hopefully we can find other funding partners and initial positives in this program that we can go forward in the future with more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DiMatteo?
I've wrestled with this for longer, more than five days. At our last meeting, I asked Mr. Lee if there was going to be a plan for the up-to-the-jobs. He stated at that time, as we have recorded in the minutes, that no, we would not receive a plan, an up-to-the-jobs plan, by council from the county executive or the administration. At our meeting on Thursday, Mr. Sloss and Mr. Farito were both there. Both of them spoke. I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I agree with both of you 100 percent. I do. I have family members who are going to lose their jobs at General Electric. I've had family members who lost their jobs at Kaiser Aluminum, as well as Starrus, and as well as International Paper. And we can go on and on and on with what those, and those factories were. This isn't a new problem. This problem's gone on for 30-plus years. When Mr. Rao came before us, and I asked him as to what this plan was going to be, we don't have one. Okay? We don't have one. Mr. Sloss, as you just said, this isn't a one-time fix. This is going to go on. Quite frankly, with Ms. Anderson, and I wish she was still here, which she presented, I had not seen, and I was not aware of those facts until tonight when she did so. I would hope that, you know, whatever becomes of the study and the $36,000 and things moving forward, and what she has in place, will help rectify that problem. If somebody If somebody could tell me how this all plays out, where we begin, and where we are going to go, because all of us in this room know that people have talked for numerous years about we need to be doing things for economic development here in Erie County. We have had failed proposal after failed proposal. At last count, you know, and we talked about this in the primary, and I'm not going to go off on that, there are 17 to 18 different groups within Erie County who say that they do economic development. All right? We tend to trip over each other and step on each other's toes. I need to see a plan. I need to see a plan. I want to see this work, but I need to see a plan before I can personally appropriate the money. I want this to work 100%, and I can't stress that enough. But at the end of the day, I do have constituents calling me and say, here you go again. You've given money to other things in the past, our tax dollars that haven't worked out. When am I going to learn? When are we going to learn? You guys give me something concrete, I'm behind you 100% and I'll be your biggest advocate. If I can answer those questions and have that in front of me, I'd gladly vote yes. Until that time, I'm sorry, I just can't. I apologize from the bottom of my heart, but I'm being 100% honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMatteo. Any other comments? Any other comments? No? Okay.
Remember, this is the amendment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roll call on the amendment, please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
We're just voting on the amendment, not the ordinance itself, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Roll call on the ordinance as amended, please.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Moving on to new business, possible adoption of resolution 37, entitled only, please.
Resolution 37 of 2017, exonerating all outstanding taxes, penalties, interest, and fees on seven properties owned by the Erie Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Faust.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Roll call on the resolution, please.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the sale of parcels from repository according to the index numbers listed on our agenda tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust and seconded by Councilwoman Fatika. Any discussion? Roll call.
On the sale of parcels, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Chairman Brenneman?
Yes. Before we adjourn, and I know I'm not going to hit our record eight minutes of a short meeting, but, you know, we are in the midst of a significant, should be a significant election, not just with the municipal elections, but also with the county executive race. I just want it to be known that although council, because we deliberate items presented by the administration, that under no circumstance will I accept the business of council to be swayed for the benefit of affecting the county executive's race. I fully expect council to deliberate discussions as we normally do and to do so with the same integrity. And for anybody who's looking to utilize the business that we do here, for anything beyond that, you can look elsewhere. There's only like, what, five weeks to go? So, but that's all I have to say. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, move to adjourn.
Stand adjourned.